I think we're ready to start the continuation of the public hearings for site plan approval, RDSA for 33 Saddle Hill Road. And here's what we're going to do tonight. We're not going to take testimony. We're not going to hear again the arguments we've heard before. I think we've seen and heard enough for us to be able to begin to consider a determination on the application. So I noticed that the applicant brought out a bunch of boards. We're not doing any of that. We're going to go through the planning board's standards and criteria, and we're going to make a determination on whether to approve this project with conditions or not. And the standard is going to be whether the application fails to meet the standards and criterias to such an egregious degree that we must refuse the application. Is everybody clear on that? Good. We've scheduled a series of issues that were brought up in previous hearing sessions. And so what we'll be doing is discussing those issues as they relate to the planning board's standards and conditions. And I'll just run through the list of issues that we believe have been raised in connection with this application. The first series deals with the size and style of the house. There are concerns about shadowing via Butters, architectural compatibility, impacts from the mass increase, and increased glare from interior lighting. For landscaping, the issues that we have heard are the adequacy of the screening and the appropriateness of the plantings. For site work, we've heard about the impact on the stream, groundwater, potential groundwater impacts, blasting impacts, and tree stability. We've also heard concerns about hours of operation for medical reasons. We've heard about the capacity and condition of the street with respect to onsite parking and repair of construction-related damage. We've also heard issues concerning dissatisfaction with the adequacy of the applicant's responses to the issues raised. Are there any other issues that we have neglected to mention in this list? Speak now. No. In that case, let's go through the list. Size and style of the house, the shadowing on of Butters. As I understand it, there was a meeting between our engineering consultant, a planning board member, applicants, and the applicant's architect on last Friday. Tony, you were at that meeting.
That's right.
Please forgive me, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. My client was asking me to say one issue on your list that was missing. Sorry to interrupt. Preserve scenic views from publicly accessible locations.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Tony, you were at that meeting. How would you summarize what happened at the meeting?
I'm going to refer to my notes. So clearly, the new house at 33 Saddle Hill creates a larger shadow on the property on 77 Pinecroft than the previous house. So challenging was that we were getting conflicting reports on how much larger that shadow was. From the applicant, we heard 13% greater, and then from the neighbors, we got a report that says 400% greater. 400% was very concerning, given that the sunlight on the property is already a little bit challenged. So both parties were nice enough to agree to me and try to resolve those two numbers. And we met with their two experts in the shadowing that had both performed analysis. And we met with John. Also, John joined in, and Dave joined in. I'll ask Dave for his opinions after I finish up here. So my wish in meeting was to do some calculations and calculate the dynamic size of the shadow multiplied by its duration over a whole year, and then compare what that was for the new house versus what it was for the old house, and see if it was closer 13% or 400%. My observations, first of all, was that either party challenged the data or the analysis of the other party. I was interested in that. Just the data, the input data, the basic input data. No one said, "You're using the wrong data." No one said, "Your analysis tools are no good." My other observation was that I didn't find either model was perfect. I understand that some simplifying assumptions had to be made, but I think we all did, and I'll let Dave figure it out. We all did find that the applicant's model was more precise for the following two reasons. First of all, it took into account that shadow size changed during the year, versus the neighbor model assumed a worst-case shadow the whole year. So that, I felt, was significant. The other reason I found the applicant model more precise is it took into account the overlapping shadow from the hill, actually, overcast the shadow of the house. And so it's important to factor that into the differences. And then apart from the numerical analysis and all that sort of thing, we also did take a look at the shadow renderings across the year to do sort of a reality check, to say, okay, those are the numbers, those two models they used. Let's look at actually how it looks, forgetting about mathematics for a bit. And I invite the board to do another round of that, by the way, to take a look at how it looks during the year. And then I return to the standards and criteria, the statement of, I think it's number non, which is to the extent possible, I'll quote here, "Proposed projects shall be designed in such ways to minimize shadows on neighboring properties." And then I also considered that the trees buffering the properties were not considered in either study. So I think that would make a substantial difference as well versus what we were looking at. I also considered there's little, if any, shadowing during the summer months in the backyard, in the pool area. I also considered that the applicant made changes in the design and the location in one round to minimize the shadowing. And then I also considered, lastly, that 33 Saddle Hill sits on a hill above 77 Pinecroft, and that a 6,000-square-foot-by-right house could cast a much larger shadow than was being presented today. So then Al brought the question to me, and I quote, "Does the totality of the information suggest that the impact transgresses our standards and criteria sufficiently to form a basis of a denial?" And the answer for me is, no, it does not. And I'll let Dave.
No.
No.
Well, if you want to get Dave's input.
Sure.
You do. Okay.
Well, you know, I can't vote, and Tony summarized it very well. The only thing I would add is, I think you've got to look at the data, maybe even just the stills again.
Do we want them projected?
No. My only thought is, look at, as Tony said, the model seemed to be fairly accurate within the bounds of reason. Look at your standards, which talk about what? Mitigate or to the extent feasible?
Minimize.
Minimize. The numbers are, I would not, the 400% of this and the 13% of that, I would like, look at like the stills for the increase in shadows, for you guys to help make your decision. The numbers are very confusing, how they were calculated, at what point, snapshots in time, things like that. You know, what we really got through on last Friday was that the information seemed accurate as presented on the stills and in the animations. It's kind of what we filtered through.
There's an increase in the shadowing on the Butters property. I think that is accepted by both the applicant and by the neighbor. The question is, is the increase in the shadowing of the neighbor's property minimized to the extent that the applicant could do it? Is it so egregious that it warrants a refusal of the application?
Did you ask me my opinion?
Yes, that's why you're standing there.
No. It's not egregious. It's fairly minimal, and the model, and I don't know why it's not stressing this enough, the model doesn't include the trees. So the increase in shadow is from the proposed house, which is behind trees which are tens of feet higher than it, and in between the two structures. Now, I know these trees aren't a solid wall, but, I mean, that's, you know, that...
But when they are included, their impact is far greater than ours.
Okay.
In this bottom.
Okay. That's your feeling, Tony, and that's your feeling, Dave. Thank you very much.
Yes.
No, I'm not going to hear testimony on this. This is the board's discussion. We're making a determination on this. I understand people's objections. You've made them perfectly clear for several sessions that we're going to make a decision. Some people are going to be unhappy with the decision, and some people are not. Either the Butters and the neighbors are going to be unhappy, or the applicant is going to be unhappy. Why are you grimacing at me?
Catherine, I'm trying to ask a question.
Yes, and I said, "We're not hearing..."
You don't want questions?
No, I don't want questions.
Even questions, not testimonies.
I'll make one exception, and only one. Ask your que-- no, no, ask your question. Ask your question.
Was the analysis including not just one of Butters, but also two at 27 Saddle Hill? Did you look at 27 or not?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the shadow study, the shadow study was, irregardless of property lines. 27, you're, it's to the left, right, looking down the hill?
Right, okay.
To the right?
Down to the right. Or what do you mean, what hill?
From 33 Saddle Hill.
If you look at the stream, you look right.
I'm standing at 33 Saddle Hill. To the left or to the right?
We're standing at 33, looking at the house from Saddle Hill Road.
I'm in the backyard of 33 Saddle Hill Road.
Then it's down to the left.
So, no, the shadow study did include that. The stills didn't highlight it, but it...
There's stills.
I didn't see any, if there was an impact, it would have been less than the subject property.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah.
That was one half question.
Okay.
Well, first of all, when I look at the shadow study, particularly in the summer, there's no impact whatsoever of the house onto either the house itself on 77 Pinecroft or the pool area. There is, late in the day, before the hill starts to gather its own shadow, a little bit crossing the corner of the property line, but not much. I am confused, however, why the September shadow study that says April similar and the April shadow study that says September similar, why they're not the same. I realize the times aren't exactly the same, but...
Would it affect your evaluation of the impact of the shadow?
They're different. I just, I'd like to know why they're different.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, Steve. Which ones are you referring to?
September, April similar versus April, September similar. In theory, they should be the same.
Want to address that?
It's at the same, same day.
They should be the same. But the times are the same. If you go 4:30...
I have the board's here.
Which is something between 3:41. Does it make any difference? No. Is it less?
So I don't have all the data. I remember it's in my...
I mean, I think it's a little large of error.
Right. But this is...
The difference is the time of day.
I think the time of day.
The difference is the time of day, sorry.
One's 2:15, one's 1:20. At the bottom, here.
Okay. I mean, the shadow for 3:41 is a little bigger than the shadow at 4:30, but...
Okay, daylight savings takes place March 13.
You're going to share it with the rest of us?
We would just kind of figure out if the discrepancy with the time could be daylight savings time, which, in other words, they keep, it's quite movable, movable feast. Because his point is that on April 21st, it's a September similar, and then the September 21st, at the time, one is at 3:41 PM, one's at 4:30 PM. The shadow is much larger than actually, but, yeah, enough.
It's a little smaller at 4:30 than it is at 3:40.
Yeah, it should be larger. It should be the reverse. So our point was, could it be that these were actually daylight savings time impacted, and maybe, you know, one was much later, an hour later than is noted? I don't know. On the other hand, I think Al's right, just making a real one.
I don't know. That's my question. You know, my question is...
It's confusing, but...
There's a question here, and the question is, would an answer impact your decision?
Would not impact mine.
No, but I'd like to know that what I'm looking at is correct.
Okay, so you, one of the objectives of the meeting on Friday was to obtain a reliable predictor of what the shadow system would be. There were two widely differing interpretations. I think what I heard Tony say is, and Dave, is that when they considered the studies that they looked at, it appeared to them as though one of the predictors was more reliable than the other, although apparently it's not possible, and I don't know why, because the sun traverses in the same arc every year, why it's not possible to do a projection that people can agree on, on what cast shadows and how far. What you wind up with, then, is a decision, you're not going to get an absolutely scientifically reliable outcome. So the question is, what, whether the outcome that looks the most reliable has an impact sufficient for us to deny the application? Okay, so that's the question for you.
Well, it depends on the answer.
Yes.
No, I mean, I think the information is sufficient. I just wish it was a little clearer.
So does anybody?
Yeah.
Could I answer his question?
Yeah.
There was additional information that was submitted a long time ago, which were videos of each month, and the videos show darkness dawn to dusk for the twelve months of the year, and those are very, very clear. And they almost, they supersede the snapshots that you see in front of you, because it dynamically shows you the shadow generate, grow across the property, go onto 77 or not, whether it hits the house or not, how big it is, and that's one thing we spent a lot of time looking at together on in our meeting.
I know you did, but I don't think we can admit that tonight.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
It's additional information.
No, we submitted it to the planning board months ago.
We didn't see it for some reason. I don't know why.
Is the house in these shadow studies the revised?
Yes.
All right. Going on.
Yes, I think it's important also to keep in mind that the applicants, in order to minimize shadows, moved the house and decreased the massing. And that's significant to me as well, that they were addressing, in other words, a perceived objection by Butters. And I thought did their best to minimize shadows irrespective of the trees and so forth, which obviously are an issue, because those trees are 110 feet tall and obviously do cast a shadow. But specifically, I think it was admirable that they made specific changes to the site plan to address that concern.
Okay, good. Any other comments on shadows before we move along? Architectural compatibility. Again, the standards and criteria under paragraph six say, "Building design and landscaping shall be in harmony with prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood and the town, including the use of appropriate building materials, screening, and other architectural techniques." But I think that the temptation is to say that the style of the building, therefore, has to be an imitation or a replication of the style of the buildings surrounding it. But I think if the scale and proportion of the design are similar to the scale and proportion of the house designs, the particular style doesn't necessarily have to be a reproduction of the styles around it. I mean, I just, I don't think, I don't think we have the, I personally don't think we have the ability to be the style police. I think we can be, we can look at height, we can look at massing, we can look at materials, but looking at whether it's Georgian or modernist or Shingle style or is not, that is not what this paragraph, in my view, intends to communicate. I mean, I've heard people say that the house doesn't fit into the character of the neighborhood, and that people in the neighborhood feel that the house should be closer in style to other houses in the neighborhood. That is a concern that I can appreciate and understand, but it's not a reason for us to deny the project. I'm just expressing my own personal view on this, that applicants have reduced the height of the house, they've reduced, tried to reduce the massing of the house, they've tried to replicate materials that are consistent with other houses in the neighborhood, they've tried to relate the proportions of the house to the proportions of other houses in the neighborhood. Is that sufficient for, to meet that standard? I think it is. I don't think we can dictate what the architectural style of a particular house must be. I don't know how my other board members feel about that.
Absolutely. And the variety of housing stock, it's not just massing, it's also materials. And I think they were careful to choose materials that were sympathetic to the site. I'm comfortable with a modern house. I realize it's different, but difference doesn't necessarily mean that it's somehow odd of character.
Also, the fact that it's a modern house and therefore has flat roofs makes it sit lower, and it also follows the contours of the land quite well. But I would agree with everything you said, Alan.
I'm moving beyond that. There has to be some room in Western for evolution of design, and we would never have had Walter Brokeus' house in Lincoln, none of the international-style homes. Actually, design wouldn't have changed from the original Georgian or the salt blocks. We would never have had any Federal-style homes in the town. So I think design, there has to, we can't say that all things must be in this style unless you're in a historic district. It's so noted.
I mean, the height of the home is 25 feet above the first floor finish elevation versus, well, that's first floor finish, not natural grade, but still versus the 37 and a half feet allowed. So it's really a story lower than it could be. And that second story, except for one small portion of it, is pulled away from 77.
The one issue that the architectural style introduces into the consideration is that the glass area is larger, considerably larger, in a modernist-style house than in a traditional style house. I mean, it's the whole purpose of modernist design, to bring the indoors, outdoors, and vice versa, to communicate between the two. So there's a question, a question has been raised as to whether the architectural style creates a problem with respect to paragraph 10, "There should be no unreasonable glare onto public roads or other public ways into the night sky or onto neighboring properties from lighting or reflection." We've, we have never actually encountered a situation where there was a question concerning glare from inside lighting. So our standards have always focused on exterior lighting. So this is a question that we haven't addressed before. I know that, I know that the design team is comfortable that the lighting from the interior will not be objectionable, but on the other hand, we're confronted with neighbors in a Butters that are concerned that it might be. So I'd like to suggest a possible condition that would be so far unique to this house, and that is that... What is the, what's the lumen count now from the exterior fixtures, the total lumen count?
16,813.
16,813.
Which is...
What I'm thinking is that we establish a total lumen limit for the exterior fixtures and whatever light is emitted from the interior, measured by a light meter at the property lines, establish a total lumen cap for that combined, that combined lighting. So when the, we're talking about fixed light fixtures, not lamps that you can move around, just the fixed light fixtures in the house. So picture this, you do the house, you have the limit of 16,000 and change for the exterior fixtures, maybe we keep the limit at 22,000. You measure with a light meter at the property lines, each wall, the wall of each, you know, the light emitted and what's picked up by the light meter at the property line after construction, and if the total of the exterior and interior lighting, the 16,000 plus whatever you pick up with a light meter at the property lines, is 22,000 or under, then that satisfies the planning board's conditions. Does that seem like a reasonable standard?
No.
You're afraid it's going to be higher?
No, I think the, may I speak briefly? The lumen count is based on the maximum wattage that a fixture can produce. And the thing is, the way most modern, high-end houses, which Western is filled with, they're lit with up to hundreds of, up to 150-watt recess cans, but those lights are never, ever used at anywhere near...
And if the total of the exterior and interior lighting, the 16,000 plus whatever you pick up with a light meter at the property lines, is 22,000 or under, then that satisfies the planning board's conditions. Does that seem like a reasonable standard?
No.
You're afraid it's going to be higher?
No, I think the, may I speak briefly? The lumen count is based on the maximum wattage that a fixture can produce. And the thing is, the way most modern, high-end houses, which Weston is filled with, they're lit with, with up to hundreds of, up to 150-watt recess cans. But those lights are never, ever used at anywhere near the full wattage down. So when we put 15 recessed downlights in a ceiling, they may not put out collectively when they're on for typical use. They may not put out more wattage than one or two bulbs at maximum capacity, which is the way you guys calculated. So, but the other hand is, we have no way of predicting, you know, because all of, all of the architectural lighting in the house is indirect. I mean, you know, except for maybe chandeliers and things like that. So the lights are like this, they're recessed in the ceiling. And the light that's being emitted from the house is the light that's, from the light fixture that's reflecting off walls, furniture, and people. And how do you, how do you calculate, how do you possibly calculate what the impact would be at the property line?
It's not a calculation, it's a measurement.
But at the same time, if you go to a, whether it's a 5,000-square-foot house that, or a 25,000-square-foot house, which there are a couple in Weston, you know, depending on personal taste and any number of things. I mean, I have no idea of knowing whether that's a reasonable standard or not. There's, I just never measured. I think it's something for the planning board to study and look into, you know, as a new standard on upcoming projects. But it's something that we've never encountered before.
May I speak on this?
Sure.
I actually think it's not a good idea on many, many levels. The first is, I think it's an absolute invasion of privacy. That's like saying, oh, you exceed that, and does the neighbor then call the police? The police show up and say, turn off that light right now? I can't imagine the discord this could spread throughout the towns. And I think people actually have a right to turn their lights on. And I just have no idea where that would go. I don't know if it's enforceable, I don't know if it's measurable. And I think it's a real invasion of someone's personal privacy.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just how I feel about it. And I will absolutely both get that.
I think Alan's proposal was to measure the lighting at its maximum, to turn all the lights on, not at any point in time, what's the lighting at the end.
So after the house is built?
After the house is built.
And you turn on every single light?
That's his proposal, that's what he's talking about. It's a starting point.
I just can't imagine why the planning board would adopt a new standard which will make our lives worse and more complicated than they currently are. And we've never done this before, except the one thing we did was with Mass Broken Stone, and this was a totally different story, because those are walls of glass and it's a commercial area. And those people were leaving the lights on all night across the pond. And the neighbors were highly impacted by that. And so we did condition, that we had motion detectors installed, I believe, in there, that if a room wasn't occupied, the light automatically turned off.
But that's a commercial development.
Exactly. And that's the only time we've done something like that. And they're not there at night. Well, they were keeping people. But I can't imagine doing this for private residences. I just can't. I can't imagine that there's any, any laws on books or standards on the books that address this in personal homes. I mean, can somebody find a standard?
How is it so much different from lumen count with the landscape lighting? How is it that much different?
Well, because landscape lighting refers to, I think that directly addressed, people had big spotlights in the size of their houses and they were flooded.
That's what, this will appear to neighbors, it'll appear.
No, it won't appear that way. It's a window, it's a difference.
Right, so you're just arguing that it's just not going to be where I'd like it.
I'm arguing that there will certainly be increased lighting out there, but that for the planning board to try and legislate this, basically, is, I, I'm just speechless, actually.
But I just don't see how it's any that much different from legislating landscape lighting. What's the difference?
Because the landscape lighting is, you can turn it off and it's not going to affect your life, okay? You can turn off the lights on the porch.
But on the other hand, it's affecting the neighbors just as much.
No, it is.
Perhaps. I mean, again, well, there's analysis to do and work.
Yeah.
I just make a point that.
Yeah, go ahead. I don't even know where to begin.
You can do this by simple observation. Walk by a house that's fully lit. And you see light emitted from the windows, whether it's a Georgian house with smaller windows or it's a big shingle style with a wall of glass in the back, which is as great in percentage as the house that we're proposing now on a square foot basis. But the difference is, the light emission coming out of a window is thousands of times less than an exposed 15-watt or 20-watt source. And if you see a bright light from a house, it's going to be a, an exposed outdoor point source. It's going to be a bulb. And, you know, the, sure, when you walk up to a house, you'll start, but you ever walked through the woods at night and you come up to a house that doesn't have exterior lighting? You don't know the house is there until you're pretty close. And the warm glow of a window, you know, 180 feet away through a wall of trees in one instance, or is, it's not effective.
Can I ask him a question, Al?
Sure.
Okay, just to gauge you a little bit. So if you're saying it's thousand times less noticeable, then wouldn't the lumen count be thousands of times less?
I just think that.
Why are you concerned about lumen count?
I'm not concerned about lumen count. I'm really concerned about the complication of the entire process. And actually, sort of what I regard as a, an utterly unnecessary condition that, you know, it might have relevance to this particular project because people are concerned about it, but applied to the entire town as a standard.
I'm not suggesting doing that. I'm suggesting that there are some, there are some conditions that are only applicable to certain circumstances.
So what happens if the lumen count is higher?
I'm not, look, Sue, calm down.
I'm just like shaking my head with the idea of this happening.
So, I'm taking, that's it, good. Take a deep breath. I'm taking, I'm taking concerns that were expressed to us. And I'm seeing if there's not some way that we might possibly consider addressing the concern. The answer may be no. Okay? It's not, holy cow, I'm outraged by what you're doing. It's just trying to make a suggestion and then seeing what, how people react to it.
I guess I just wanted to react earlier.
Yeah, you really did. Thank you very much.
You got the reaction.
Can I propose a solution?
Yeah.
In the event that a neighbor has a serious problem with the glow from the house and it's a legitimate concern, the thing for us to do is simply to install a shade on the, on the offending glass area. So, you know, and it's something I think we should be able to work out with our neighbors, you know, on a, on a case-by-case basis. So there was a house that's close by and we all agree that, yes, that large window is, is, you know, creating a, a eyesore for them or it's an environmental nuisance for them. We can address it locally as neighbors. And what we can do, we don't want to rip light fixtures out, but what we can do is install, one thing that modern houses have when they do large expanses of windows, we're not concerned about keeping light from leaving the house. We're concerned about, you know, light actually getting in. And so large expanses of glass have large shade components. And it's an easy thing to manage if it is an issue. But I, that's my suggestion.
All right, so you're suggesting that, you're suggesting a shade if people object.
Right.
And so I'm trying to, we're, we're in the process of making a decision and writing conditions. So the condition would, we would, what you're suggesting is that we write a condition to that effect?
No, I'm not. I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that the way to solve the problem of this issue without setting, without making it really complicated would be for us to, if someone has a complaint and it's a legitimate complaint, we'll put a shade.
You know, I, we'll be here all night if everyone, if we debate every one of these things. I know people want to wade in. Jamie, what, if there's something substantive you want to, you want to add to the conversation, go ahead. I know your hands raised.
There seems to be comment about neighbors. I'm going to just simply read what you were referring to. "No unreasonable glare onto public roads or other public ways into the night sky or onto neighboring properties." So the solution you, the comments you're making, I hope you address those, all of those elements, night sky included, not just neighbors.
Yeah, but Jamie, Sue's absolutely right. We have never conditioned interior lighting, except in the case of commercial projects where the light levels are extremely high for any project that we've ever conducted site plan review for. And the standard is, I mean, houses have lights on the inside. The standard is whether the proposed, at, the proposed project is sufficiently egregious to warrant us denying it.
Frankly, I can tell you don't want dialogue tonight. I would observe that it's.
I've had so much dialogue.
I don't blame you. I wasn't intending to dialogue. I've been dialoguing with the other gentleman.
I know, and this is the problem, once you make an exception, you have to make a rule.
So I want to say one thing and stop at the moment, which is, I don't agree with the way you're phrasing the legal standard of what you're supposed to do. I do appreciate the dialogue on how to address the issue of glare. You could talk amongst yourselves about the several different ways. And personally, I think you're doing better to go along the direction of mandating shielding than you are for something that you've never done before about illumination at the border. But that's, that's your decision.
Yeah, okay, thank you. One more question.
Either the lighting schedule and the maximum wattage in the overhead cans could be addressed and that would help mitigate that.
Again, I, I, I don't know if you've heard, one of my planning board colleagues who went ballistic on the idea of.
Oh, no, I didn't, but.
Okay.
That's her opinion.
Well, she's the one voting.
I understand.
Well, also, it doesn't work that way because the lights that are closer to the windows are going to have more lumens than the ones that are in the interior. So then you have to decide what percentage of the lumens of the lights further into the house count in the calculation. I mean, it gets very, very complicated. So a couple of things. First, I think it's worth noting, again, because we may have all forgotten, that the windows facing 77 Pinecroft are by far the least on all four elevations. And then the, speaking of a public way, the windows facing Saddle Hill Road on the opposite side are also like the second least amount. So then you're left with the ones facing, I don't know.
The conservation trails and the night sky.
Yeah, so what we have done, I believe in the past, is made sure that there was adequate screening at night with the landscaping. And I don't know how much we've thought about that for this particular house. I mean, there is already a ton of screening, both existing and proposed. And I'm wondering if we can, you know, and of course it would have to be evergreen because you want to be around. But I'm wondering if, if we can use that as a way to control the lighting. And if it turns out that it's not adequate after the house is built, then perhaps more evergreens would have to be added.
The planting plan right now on the slope, right, contemplates that. There's a buffer there of evergreens.
Exactly.
And there's also provision that if there's a hole somewhere that it gets filled by being field placed, so.
Exactly. So that's what I'm saying, that we have used planting as a way to screen lighting. And I also ask the question, are you planning to put shades on every single?
We're putting shades on a lot of the big window areas, especially those facing west and south.
I don't know, are those the large expanses of windows? No, that would be the eastern west.
There's a, there's a large expansive windows that faces the back of the property where there's also a lot of screening. But our intent with all of this was to deal with this with the tech go with large amount of screen planting. And the, because in, in doing this, we've been very aware of the great distances between most of the houses that surround it. I have nothing more to add on that stuff.
Kim, you know, I, what I, what I'm concerned about is that we wind up with somebody, we're not going to be able to eliminate people seeing any light at all. I mean, so the question is whether the screen planting is adequate to shield the neighbors and the butters from the greater expanse of, or the greater impact from the interior lighting. I mean, what if we included a provision that, that, you know, the screen planting would get, the final screen planting wouldn't happen until, until the lighting had been installed and you could begin, you could place the landscaping to the greatest effect to screen the impact from the interior lighting? I mean, that seems like, that seems like a reasonable condition. I see everybody nodding their head.
I just have a suggestion. Glare into the night sky isn't addressed by screening, but shades sure do address it. That seems much more appropriate as a requirement than screening, which doesn't do anything to the night sky. I mean, I can't see downtown Boston that can go outside and tell you which direction it is looking at the sky.
Yeah. What do people think about it, about a condition that calls for shades on the larger expanses of light?
Calling for shades doesn't mean that the shades have to be pulled down. And we do start demanding that they have to come down at 6:00 P.M.
That's the problem with the shade, we become the shade police.
And it's intrusive until people realize. And you're really starting to dictate, really, minor things. And any house, any new house, and I'm sure the current house there, if it was lived in, it would be illuminated and it would cast light. They do, that's what happens with human health.
Right.
All right. So we've actually hit a couple of these tangentially as we've been discussing them.
I'm, I'm less worried about night sky issues than I am about neighbors seeing a glow through the house. The buffering sounds like an acceptable switch.
I agree.
Okay. Impacts from the mass increase, my feeling is personally that they've, they've tried to reduce the mass. I think they've made an earnest effort to do it. It may not be totally acceptable to everybody, but they have, I think they were, you reduced the size of the house by 20%.
Arguably by 20%.
Yeah. That's a, that's a considerable accession to the, to the concern that the house was too large, it seems to me. I don't know what more, we can't, just, just, excuse me for being an attorney, Jamie, but we, my interpretation, as we've been told many times by town council, is that we can't limit the size of the house so that, under any circumstances. So that a voluntary reduction of 20% seems to us, it seems to me, to be a real concession to people's concern. It may still look too large to other people, but again, we can't stipulate that the house has to be 6,001 square feet. By, by, at least that's the advice we've gotten from town council.
But I would add that if the house were 5,999 square feet, which is not much smaller than what it is, I would put money on the fact and it were a spec house, that the impacts on the butters, particularly on 77 Pinecroft, would be much greater than the house that we see. The massing would be much greater. Because if you, if you look at the typical new house built in Weston, it almost always gets very close to the maximum height of 37 and a half feet. And it, and it, you know, it's not set, the second floor is not set way back except for one portion of it. So although it's obviously not anything you can ever prove, I think that, I would say that the house being proposed is most likely, has much less impact than a house that would be built there as a right.
The bylaw speaks for itself with respect to your right to look at alternatives. Not your right to require a particular size, other than, of course, your jurisdiction. But your right and in fact expectation, in my opinion, to look at alternatives. And I don't think you have them on your record. You do not have alternatives that you've asked for to even decide, is this one more or less? Have they minimized? Is there a feasible alternative? You have not asked for them, so it's not on your record.
I disagree. I really think that, it, there was a letter presented by an abbotor claiming. There was a letter presented by an authority claiming that there are some builders who employ the notion that they build a house and say, "I'd agree to size." And then they agree to cut the size of the house back and say, "We negotiated, so you ought to grant approval." And I don't think that's the case here. I think the original house, obviously, was bigger, but it had an impact. And I think that the specific things that they addressed in reducing the size of the house was completely mapped to reducing the shadows. So I respected the fact that they were sensitive to the concerns of the butters. So I think they were successful in minimizing the shadows in this case.
I agree with you. They were successful in making them less than the first design. It's your decision, not ours, but we don't agree that it has been minimized.
Well, let me put it this way. We recognize that somebody's not going to agree with us in this discussion. That's why we get paid the big bucks to sit here and get eggs thrown at us, right?
No, and I wouldn't have spoken. Had you not named me, looked at me, and said, "Jamie," I wouldn't have needed to speak.
Well, you were quoting a lot of you before, and I appreciate that. I'm glad to have that instruction. Thank you very much.
It was free.
Well, it isn't. We're talking... I think the next item, because we've gone over screen planting. I don't think... Were there any questions outstanding on screen planting? I don't remember any.
No, I think you addressed it tangentially when we talked about field placement. Is there a... Specifically about the light at nighttime. Yes.
Yep. Okay, so that brings us down to the impact on the stream. Impact on the stream, as I understand it, John, the Conservation Commission has made its final ruling on the stream. It's an intermittent stream?
Yes.
Okay.
It is not.
Well, it's been the superseding order issued by the...
It has been. There is no final order. It is on appeal.
Oh, okay.
It is legally not final.
There's been a determination. If your appeal is successful, we can revisit that issue. But as they stand now, we're dead in the water on that one because it's an area of the stream.
There is no final order.
I say, if your appeal is successful, come back to us and we can reconsider that one. But right now, what we have, as I understand it, is a determination from the CONCOM. And what else besides that?
DEP, superseding one.
Okay.
It's an original, though.
So. Groundwater impacts. I know there was some discussion on the potential for groundwater impacts. Where did that discussion wind up? I think the last thing that you talked about was that you had done test pits and you haven't found, you didn't find any ledge anywhere. Is that correct?
Correct, that we have formed four tests.
Four tests?
Yeah, four tests. One was in the area of the back patio, where the walkout is. All the excavations went down about seven to nine feet. Didn't find any refuse at all. It was all loamy sands, no groundwater evidence at all. So that's how we established the groundwater in that general ballpark for the beach area basin that's down in that area. And also, that's probably the reason why we believe that, as of right now, we don't believe we're going to encounter any ledge during the excavation. Because we have, during that time, we have that section there, which is, you know, nine feet below the basement side elevation. You have a portion of the house that overlaps the proposed house. And you actually have, on the high end, it's all just a frostball excavation. So we don't believe we're going to be encountering any kind of groundwater.
Dave, do you feel that that's, that groundwater is going to be an issue of this project?
No. This stormwater has been dealt with on this project similar to two hundred others that have been in front of you.
I know that people were concerned in connection with the groundwater impacts with blasting. But if you're not finding ledge, then there won't be any blasting. What I would say is that our condition for blasting is more stringent than anything that the state required mandates. Much more stringent. As I think you could attest, Jay. We really hold people's feet to the fire when they're blasting. So if you do by some chance encounter ledge and blasting is necessary, we would impose the planning board standard protocol on blasting notification, location of sensors, the whole nine yards.
The hearing.
The hearing, the whole thing. Tree stability. There's been a lot of discussion about the impact of the proposed construction on the stability of the trees on the slope. And just to get sort of a final determination on that. Yeah, stop pointing at her, Dave. Kim and Dave, we're going to rely on you two guys to just give us your interpretation of what the danger is that might exist in that regard. One of you want to say anything?
Have you seen it in other projects in Weston? I mean, how many times have we blasted for projects in Weston and we've not seen an issue in this town? Right?
Right.
Yeah, so you think that the danger from the site work that's being proposed is not a major concern, or even a minor concern for you?
And even if it were and trees were to come down, they would be required to come back before us to let us know what has come down or what needs to come down because of potential dangers? Because it would be within the do not touch zone. Right?
It was also talking about neighboring trees on neighboring properties.
Which are much further away.
I mean, I just, again, we've been doing this for a while.
Right.
We haven't seen it.
Yeah.
We've seen trees die of projects. There's usually a reason. Someone's run over the roots for three months or stockpiled on top of them. But, you know, trees on neighboring properties?
Okay. I mean, we have to, they're our consultants. All right, one was added to the site work, which is preserve scenic views. What is the concern there? What scenic views are we not preserving?
I think it's the conservation. Are you looking at me for an answer?
You're the one that raised the question.
I'm sure other people have too, but preserve scenic views from publicly accessible locations.
Yeah, what's the problem?
The scenic views are destroyed day and night on public conservation trails with a structure that towers eighty-four feet over those public trails. And they're unshielded by the landscaping as proposed. There's over, and then we get to the glare, there's over a thousand square feet of windowed light that will face the conservation land of the public trails. So the scenic view issue... Oh, I see. You asked me because I put it at the end, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because you raised it.
Yeah, that's in the submitted term.
All right, so the concern is that the house itself will be so offensive that people will have an unpleasant experience on the trail? Is that the assertion?
That it was previously not present at all from now on.
Well, there was a house there. There is a house there.
It's not visible from the public trails. You can't see it.
The fact that there's a house that you can see that's being screened, maybe not sufficiently adequately, is in and of itself grounds to deny the application? The fact that you might be able to see part of the house that's being proposed? I'm just asking.
I'd be more than happy to say, my thoughts on this, which are that the standard of the bylaw is quite strong. It may not be what the planning board has a tendency to go towards, but the standards of the bylaw are strong. And I think you have the ability, in this case, to require more screening from the public trails, although it's good to keep coming back to the neighbors. And as long as I get one moment, the issue is the trees falling on the house as well as the trees in the front.
Right.
The glare you already covered, so I won't go back to that unpleasant territory for some of you. I think you've covered that already.
But I was unclear on, it was the structure from the trails is what's...
And the glare.
And the glare.
It's someplace that is not, that there's nothing there now.
The reflection of sunlight off the windows?
No, the glare from the house.
People walking at night?
Yeah, they do all the time. They're concentrated, I would speak to, have a neighbor speak for themselves. They're pretty well traveled. A lot of them walk those.
We did talk about that, so he was only asking you. But we were talking about screening the glare.
And so far, the plan didn't have those screens. Didn't have that screen.
Well, we just added that condition. You may have heard it about...
I heard discussion of it. I haven't seen it yet.
I just want to read a phrase from your landscape architect's conclusions that she submitted to you on this particular issue. Quote, "The proposed buffer plantings are reactive to the proposed development. Protect view sheds by blocking any holes in existing buffering." So that's you from your own consultant.
Is there a site plan that shows where the trails are? We're just looking for...
Yeah, I'm looking for the trail.
CONCOM has trail maps that they can...
I'm sure they're called that. The point is, this plan has not been developed.
Yeah, it's an overlap, GIS.
But Kim is actually here, and she's here. Maybe, Kim...
I have, I mean, I've submitted my...
Our consultant is speaking. Kim, go ahead.
I have nothing more to say besides what I've already submitted. This, I've looked at this project like I look at so many other projects in Weston. They have maintained existing buffer. They've done that. They are putting in new plantings to plug holes in what might be an open buffer with native plantings that are going to do well in this microclimate. I don't know what else I can say. I've looked at this plan. I've been working with the applicant for months. I feel like it is a solid planting plan.
Thank you. I'll keep that addressed.
All right, you're looking for the trail. So let's go on, and we'll come back to that one. Medical concerns. I think this is one we have to take seriously because there's a letter from a doctor that says that the construction activity could have a really disruptive effect on someone.
Can I just ask how old the child is?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Is she in high school right now?
Yes.
Is she going to graduate soon? We don't know. We don't know if she'll be leaving home or going to college or anything like that.
She's been very sick, so we don't know.
All right. I was just wondering about that, that if we condition something and the child then goes away, will we have hardship?
Qualifier.
Right.
You can build a qualifier.
Well, we could put a qualifier on that. Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
But the question is whether... I'm trying to remember the hours.
It's nine in the morning on weekdays.
Till what time?
It just went construction to start.
No, no. No, no, with the medical letter, remember? I'm just trying to remember what the request...
Nine on weekdays and ten on weekends.
For all construction activity?
Yes, for noisy.
Till what time? From nine till what time?
There's no end time.
There's no end time. To start time.
The waking up time. What are our standard hours? Is it seven thirty?
Seven.
Seven A.M.?
And then we have to wait to eight. We've had conditions that will do till eight.
We've had some eight o'clock conditions. I mean, would it be possible to schedule constructions so that the major, the noisy construction activity wouldn't start until nine o'clock?
That's one to answer that.
Wayne?
Wayne here.
I don't know if I could get workers to come in at nine o'clock to start work.
I'm not saying come in at nine. Are there activities that you could, that you could carry out, construction activities, that didn't make a lot of noise up until nine o'clock?
Well, in the beginning is when you make most of the noise. You're doing excavating, demo work, you start your framing, you have nail guns. It's going to be a little noisy. It's not going to be...
I didn't say it was going to be, can you do it easily? Can you do it?
I just don't know how you do it easily.
I didn't say do it easily. I said, can you do it? Is it, would it be possible to schedule it in such a way that we... We have conditioned start times at eight.
Right.
This is just an hour later than that.
I mean, eight o'clock, I can understand. Nine is going to, I'm not going to get people to even come to the job site to work. Why is that? We work at hospitals, nursing homes, we start at seven, would never...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. There are a couple of architects sitting at this table. We know what construction requires. It's just, we're looking at a letter from a doctor that says, you know, it's terrible if we start construction before nine o'clock in the morning. I'm just, we're just asking if it's possible to work around that.
I just, you know, nine o'clock, I just don't see how that's going to work. I'm sorry. I have plenty of sympathy for the child.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking that. What if, I mean, would it be possible to split the difference and say eight thirty? Would that, would that work? I mean, the letter says nine o'clock. The applicant's saying nine o'clock is a real hardship for him. We're trying to make accommodation for the fact that your daughter is sick. Would eight thirty work, at least in theory?
If I may, I very much appreciate your taking seriously the doctor's letter. And none of us are in a position to say something different from what the doctor has said. You're going to do what you choose to vote, but we can't say it's...
We know what, just ignore it.
We can't say it's okay to do differently than the doctor has said. And I, Mr. Caruso is an honorable person. Workers can be told, you get paid if you come and do the job. And there's plenty of people who want work.
Okay, we'll have to work that one out ourselves. Did you ever find the trail?
I can't. I'd rather do it in somebody else's because they won't, I'm going to put the screen on.
Can you do it on your computer so you can project it?
Why is nine o'clock so difficult? Why is nine too much every night, just so I understand?
John, if you go to the western portion of... No, it's there. It's so small, my phone, you can't...
The traffic.
Okay, the traffic bills out.
Right, so...
It's tough for them to get there at nine. They have to beat the traffic.
A lot of them leave actually, get to the jobs by quarter past six, six thirty, just so they're not sitting for two hours in traffic.
Right.
And, you know, they'll wait till seven o'clock before we start.
Typical hours for a contractor would be seven to four, three thirty?
Yeah, four, four thirty, five o'clock.
Then there's the other question about weekends.
We don't usually have...
Actually...
Well, after the house is buttoned up, we let them work inside. Do we let them work on Saturdays?
We have done, but it's, but there's been a condition that weekend work can only occur as long as it doesn't create noise.
Yeah, right, it's like the inside...
The inside work, so once it's buttoned up, then we'll have weekend work. Right. So I think that's, we've imposed that condition many times before. I think we can do that in this case.
Alex, that imposed on leaf floors and other things that happen in the neighborhood all the time?
That's not planning.
Normal landscaping is not subject to that bylaw.
It's just construction stuff, hammers and saws and...
Are you talking about nail guns?
Yeah, it's, once the house is buttoned up, you know... Yeah, it's, once the house is buttoned up, you know, then, you know, they can work inside. But outside work where it's noisy on the weekend, we've very often said, conditioned not to do that.
So just for the record, the, the bylaw permits construction activity Monday through Friday, 7:00 A.M. to 6:30 P.M. It's also permitted on Saturdays from 7:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M. Provided, however, that such activity shall be limited to interior work only. No outside construction activity shall take place on Saturdays except between the hours of 8:00 A.M. and 3:00 P.M. And then it says no outside construction activity is allowed to take place on Sundays or certain holidays.
Yeah. But that's usually enough to mitigate most of the major impacts from construction. All right, the remaining ones are question about whether we're going to require parking on site. And the answer to that is yes, absolutely. No parking on the road, ever. Period. So that's a standard condition. The, the other question concerning the street was repairing the damage resulting from construction. And I think if we, my suggestion is if we oppose the same, exactly the same condition on this house that we opposed on 36th Avenue, that, that would solve that problem. So, yes.
Fifth question. In imposing that condition, are we sort of starting at the same place? If you look at the road today, it's going to be that shape.
We need to record it.
Sorry.
You need to record it, get a baseline.
Okay, understood.
Okay. We don't want you building a brand new road when it's, you know, full of potholes right now. So just, just give us a baseline and then make any repairs from there. And then the last one was, did you find the trail? You did.
Yeah, you want to put it up?
Yeah, if you could.
Trail?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's still there.
So where, so.
So the gray is the property.
Right. And now, and large, there's the trail. And then what's the scale on that?
Where's the trail from the house?
Yes.
Are.
Oh, it's a long way away.
Yes.
Wow.
It's not.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of all the houses over in Concom and Sudbury where the trail is like five.
Right, on the property.
Five feet along the property line.
It's the height, I'm sure some of you went to the site.
Well, actually, these are really large houses. These are spec houses, so they're right up to the.
The hill next to you.
Not the height of the house, the height of the hill.
It's going up the property lines.
Well, Kim's pretty good. She feels.
She's very.
She's very good.
I don't know, I mean, I. We're looking across the valley.
Now we're looking Google Maps and see how vegetative it is.
I mean, this is never, this trail question hasn't come up before than I remember.
Well, only with the ones that literally are on the property line.
Yeah, yeah, you had it on that one on Boston Post Road.
No, 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 not ever, on this project, I mean.
Yeah, I hadn't, I wasn't aware this was a problem. It is a long way away.
I don't know, I, well, you know, I, we can refer it to Kim and see what the, whether there's anything that needs to be considered. But it looks like it's a, you know, you're going all the way across to the other side of the valley.
It's actually to the bottom of the valley. Part of the.
Part of it is, yeah.
Run along the little string.
I can read a contour map. Good, then the last one was the adequacy of the responses to neighbors' concerns. Anyone want to address that one? How do you feel?
Well, I mean, I think I'd be repeating myself. I think that there, there has been sensitivity to the objectionable features of the disruptions to view. I, I think they've addressed. I mean, the only outstanding thing is addressing a possible, coming up with a condition to address the medical condition.
And I believe you had the generator we meant to address.
Yeah, the generator is a standard, right? It has to meet the 40 D E P, the property line. So that's, that is a standard. It has to be done.
Right.
As far as I know, all the questions have been addressed.
Good, then. Now, comments, questions outstanding from anyone in the audience? Good. What we'll do is continue the hearing to review the decision. To what meeting, John? What date?
The date. The, the next hearing dates are on the, the second.
Or the 16th.
Which is very full at this point. The 16th has a slot at nine o'clock.
16th at nine. We'll review the decision. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my client's not going to be here on the 16th. Is it possible on the second?
Did you just hear?
Just asking.
No, we've, we've got a full agenda on the second. We, it's got to be on the 16th. It's not necessary for him to be there. I mean, you, you can represent him. It's a, you've been down the road before. We're reviewing the draft decision.
My client has requested to be here. I'm just making out requests here, that's all.
Okay. We can't do it on the second, sorry. We'll do it on the 16th, at nine o'clock.